Hello, Martin here.
Hi, Martin, and who else is here? Amy? Yeah. Hi, Brad.
Hi, Brad. Hello.
Brad, did you take a quick look at my phone call?
Hey there.
No, did you call out? I'm sorry. I
Just a quick item that I just wanted to mention, that's all. Nothing too critical.
Let me grab it. I should have my phone anyways. I'm a little out of sorts. You
We have six attendees and they're all on now. I believe. I guess that's better. Not that anybody wants to see my face necessarily, but it was kind of dark and more sinister looking than it usually is.
That looks fine.
So we're hello, Glenessa. So we just need Roman and Chris.
Do you know if this automatically records or if I need to?
It's recording right.
It is recording. Is it live streaming? Do you know?
It is not yet.
Do you know how to kick that into gear or should I be looking around?
It looks like play on YouTube. It won't let me. Well, let me do that without the sign in info. So you need to upload it later.
Sign into the the Common Council account?
Yeah, the Albany.
It's all shared, right?
Yeah, I don't. I don't have that logged in.
Okay. Chris is here. We have we have a quorum. So I think we should get started. Are we live now? And can the participants all hear us? Brad? You're you need to be unmuted.
I'm working on that, Al. I'm having a little bit of
Okay.
difficulties here. I I mean, I see nine. I see nine attendees on the call. I'm going to ask
There's 15. There's us plus the members of the public.
Correct. I'm going to ask Sam from my office, who is on the call as an attendee, to just shoot me a text if he can hear me. Yep. We should be good to go.
Okay, I will begin the meeting then. Good evening, everyone. This is a meeting of the Albany City Planning Board for the 22nd of December. Our last meeting of the calendar year. And we have a few items on the agenda. Before I start with that, I will note that after the items are presented one at a time, the members of the planning board will have the opportunity to question the applicant. And that before that, the applicant has six minutes to present. I'm sorry, 10 minutes to present. And then the planning board members can ask questions of the applicant. After that, the depending on the issue, the planning staff will make its recommendations, or we may have testimony from the public first. The public, if you would like to speak, each of you will have three minutes. And we ask that you sign up by either putting your name in the chat box and mentioning that you would like to speak and either Sam or Brad will be able to see that and take your name. Like I said, you have 30 minutes, three minutes to speak. And then at about 30 seconds, you will see a clock that will count down the time. Common Council members who may wish to speak will have six minutes because they represent a larger part of the district, a larger number of people within the district that they represent. So the first item on the agenda is one that I will need to recuse myself because it is a Habitat for Humanity request, but I will present it. And it is for 832 Manning Boulevard. The applicant is Habitat for Humanity, represented by Fred Dargust, and it's in the mixed-use community urban district. And the request is for the planning board to be lead agency for the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And the proposal is for a subdivision of six parcels for the construction of single-family townhouses. I will leave the meeting and ask our vice chairman, Martin Hall, to take over. And someone can, I guess, Brad, you can call me on my cellphone when you're complete with the item.
Okay.
Very good. Thanks, Al. Okay, so who's going to be speaking to this?
Yeah. There's more to this than there than appears for.
Okay.
Let me
Is this Dan Hirschberg presenting for this?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So you're gonna go over to the attendees list.
Promote them to panelists.
Yep, or just allow them to talk.
Hello.
Dan, you should be good to talk. Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yeah.
PowerPoint up.
It's loading as we speak.
Okay, thank you.
Give me just a moment. There we go.
All right. Making progress.
Yep.
So as the chairman introduced it, there's a piece of property that's vacant along Manning Boulevard. It used to contain buildings that were previously demolished and Habitat for Humanity. Here's the site photo. It's between a couple of buildings that were previously originally constructed by Albany Housing Authority. And this is what they intend to do. I don't need the site photo. Next, next screen is fine. If you go to the next one. There it is. This is a site plan. And these are six individual townhomes, each with four bedrooms. There are a couple of dumpster enclosures which were previously put in to serve both the adjoining buildings and conserve these buildings too. So dumpsters were located on a portion of both both the end lots, which are 820 and 830 any board. In order to get some parking rather than have parallel parking, we propose to add this angular parking. And because we because we have six separate units, we have to provide six handicap spots. So those are provided there as well as six additional spaces. So the that's more than a parallel parking would have provided. We only would have space for like five parallel parking spots in front of this unit, in front of these units. The the property grades to the rear and goes into a stormwater system on Albany Housing Authority's property. The front portion grades out to the pavement. Separate sewer and water connections are made for each unit. And unfortunately, the utility is on the other side of Manning Boulevard, which means that will be end up milling and repaving Manning Boulevard for that entire length that's shown in the darker asphalt color. Next. What I have here is the statistics showing each individual lot. On it, on a total lot, it's 67.2% pervious. Each slot by itself is someplace between 56 and 72% pervious area. So we're we're well beneath the maximum pervious area we're permitted. And next, I think I have another slide or two. These are the front elevations of the buildings and rear elevations of the buildings. They are and because of the grade difference, there's entrance that grades at the rear and there's a deck at the rear which is accessible through stairs. And next, I have two side elevations which show you from the shows have a lot grades down behind the building. It's up a couple of steps from the sidewalk here and that's there are units that are handicapped accessible also. And I think that's my last slide, but I can answer any questions which the board may have.
Yes, any any questions from board members?
I have a question. This is Glenessa. So just going back to the not necessarily the floor plans, but the the grades, the elevation, yes, that picture. So they look similar to the homes that were built down on Sheridan Avenue. Am I correct in saying that?
Yeah. Yeah, the humanity has used this plan before. It had to be modified a little bit for the grade difference, but this is very similar.
Okay, so it's so and I remember that some of the homes are these two family homes or are these going to be one family homes?
Each one's each one's a single-family, four-bedroom unit so that they're they're all they're six single-family homes being constructed.
Okay, so they're all single things. I know down in Sheridan that you have a mix between single and 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 two-family. That's why I asked the question.
Yeah, there are there are two families that looks look quite similar.
Okay. And then my next question is, it looks from the elevation that one home is smaller in square footage than the other?
Yeah, there's a there's a somewhat disparity if oh, I think
Okay.
Go to if you go to the end of the presentation, I think there are some floor plans. Go back.
Yeah, they're just hard to. There we go. Yeah, they're just hard to see virtually. That's all. I can't increase my screen.
Okay, well, we have two separate floor plans and one's a little bit larger than the other. It's got a bump out in the front. The other is recessed back, but they are both four-bedroom units. There's a there's a larger common room or a great room, whatever you want to call it, in in one unit than the other.
Okay. All right, those were just my questions in looking at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments from from the board? I have a quick question. Will these will be owned, if you simple, then by 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 the by the people occupying them, right? They're not rentals.
Yep, these are. These are for sale units.
Okay. Okay, any anyone sign up to from the public sign up to speak on this this topic?
I don't believe so. If anyone would like to speak, could you raise your hand? I don't see anyone.
Okay. Okay, so then we just have to pass a motion on the seeker then, correct?
Correct. Yeah, Zach did have a slide here. He wanted to just clarify since the the planning board hasn't really had many major subdivisions for them in addition to doing a development plan review. In Seeker, the board will be looking at an action for a major subdivision approval here too. And that's anything that's proposed to create five or more new lots subject to review by the planning board and the criteria are stated below. So any any further questions from the board on that? We answer them or we can deal with that moving forward as as the project comes back to us in a future.
Okay, I have no questions. Okay. So then the can I hear a motion to declare the planning board lead agency for seeker purposes on this project?
Still moved.
Thank you, Glenessa. Second. See, oh, I guess we we don't have anyone on right now. Am I allowed to second it?
Is did Chris drop off? Oh, there we go.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Chris. I'll second it. I, on favor, say aye.
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 Okay, aye. Nonays, so it passes unanimously. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I will let me reach out to
Al call.
Al, yeah. Hey, we're all set for you to hop back on. Yep. Yep.
Okay. I failed to introduce the planning staff on board today. Our senior planner, Zach Powell, who's actually prepared most of the agenda, is on vacation, visiting his family. So we do have, we're actually blessed to have the planning director here as well as planning staff member, Sam. And they're handling the technological stuff today. So although we we have good talent when it comes to the planning expertise, technologically, they may be a little bit green. But we will, we will press on. So the next item on the agenda is 76 Second Avenue. This is a mixed-use proposal. We have seen this project week before on five different occasions including public meetings and also including workshops. The reason that we are here today is a minor modification of condition of approval for item number eight. Or condition number eight. And we will just hear what that is about and then move forward on it.
And Al, I think I'm I'm up to sort of go over this really briefly here, although we will certainly give the applicant the opportunity to weigh in. We were, there's there was new legislation recently passed by the Common Council that basically asks us to notify all the consenting departments that may have been you know, had conditions of approval for a given development plan. And in this case, the the Water Department reached out and notified us that they would prefer to have their condition written verbatim as opposed to generalize as we had originally stated it in the conditions of approval. And you can see here, the I apologize for the small text. But I promise there's there's not a whole lot to it except the adopted conditions sort of consolidated some of these items into a singular condition that refers to all the agencies that will inevitably have to endorse the plans associated with this project and the requested revision. It's really three, three, three conditions that are stated as as below. I can, I'm happy to read them, but I don't know that that's necessary. I'll leave that discretion board if you'd like to get into further detail.
Okay, any questions from the board regarding this? You all received the memo so you know what the items are. Okay, is there anyone who wishes to speak from the public? And if there is, I would remind you that we are not taking testimony on the entire project. Again, we've already done that and we've approved everything and made recommendations to the Common Council. But if you wish to speak on this specific waiver and then the wording on the on the condition conditions, you may do so.
I don't see anyone and I didn't have anyone signed up. Would anyone that would like to comment, go ahead and raise their hand now. And allow you to speak. Okay, I don't see any hands raised, so I'm gonna presume we don't have any speakers. That said, the action for the board to consider would be the the modification of the the condition to reflect the the proposed conditions articulated in the slide on your screen.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
And seconded, who was the mover?
Martin.
Thank you, Martin. And second was Glenessa.
Yep.
Further questions? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the project proposed at 60 Colvin Avenue. The applicant is Anthony Di Tomasis. And this is in the MU NC, that's Mixed Use Neighborhood Center zoning district. And this is a major development plan review for the construction of a three-story building and a two-story building with apartments and mixed use as well with 17 mixed use of commercial on the first levels. The project has appeared before the planning board on three separate occasions in June, August and September, as well as in the workshops. And there's a couple of items that we need to go over on this. So if we can, we can hear from the applicant. We can hear from the applicant.
Leave Dan Hirschberg is. Able to speak.
Yeah, can you hear me again?
Yes.
Okay, Daniel Hirschberg, Hirschberg and Hirschberg here for the applicant who's 4050 Colvin LLC. This is aerial photo of the site, 2017 is the date of that site aerial photo. And this is a plan showing soil investigations. You reviewed this plan previously and the major element there was that. There was a little area that had been shown on a previous plan. That showed a plume of area, you see it up at the top of the area that extended over onto our site. So we conducted a test pit right at the point of that and found no. No pollutants that were disqualified for use as for residential construction. That's true of all the borings on the site, the site. Bill Hennessy's group conducted a rigorous review of it and as you can see. There are a whole number of different elements on the site which have been. A whole bunch of different borings and tests made over the past and. All soil is suitable for use for residential construction is the bottom line. Next.
Sorry about that. I was trying to do one thing and something else happened, so. Go.
This. This is the site plan. It's changed somewhat since the last time you saw it. Since that time, we've extended the sidewalk on Anthony Street all the way up to the dog park, which is beyond our site. We added four light standards along Anthony Street to mimic the spacing of normal light standards. We adjusted the existing tree pits out front because the forester indicated to us that. Those trees would die within a short period of time due to infestations. So that we cut, we're going to cut down those trees and replace them with new trees. The areas of everything is pretty much as we had it before. There we got forty nine units in one building and fourteen in the other. The total is sixty three units and we have slightly more than forty eight hundred square feet of commercials based on the first floor of the larger building on the left. Next plan. Here's some data from the site. The parking we've gone over before. The we take a credit for shared parking. We take, we took a credit for proximity to transit. And we end up with required a sixty three parking spots. We're providing sixty seven, which is. Which is about six percent more than the required amount. We've already out the bike bicycle parking as required, the recreation areas. We totaled up the recreation areas in both our. The courtyard internal to the building, the larger building. A portion of the dog walk area at the back, which is actually encroaching over the property, but it's. It's green space and we have some green space around the patio. And then we have the fitness center lounge internal to the building and it totals just under eight thousand square feet, which is more than the seven eight hundred and fifteen square feet required. Existing site coverage on this thing. We amended it somewhat. We've taken credit for the green roof area since we believe that qualifies as a pervious area since it'll have soil on it and trees on it. And with that change. The pervious area of the site becomes thirty percent. Previously, we had somewhat less than that, but it it conformed with the code requirements for the zone, but. Didn't require with a statement elsewhere in the code, which talks about thirty percent vegetative coverage. Next. This is the landscape plan. You'll see that there's a significant number of trees planted along Anthony Street. And that's because we required to plant one for every thirty five feet worth of frontage. Well, on Colvin Avenue, that would break the rhythm of trees along Colvin Avenue. The original plant had four trees on it, so we placed it with four trees on it so that we didn't, you know, if we planted that many trees at every thirty five feet along Colvin Avenue. It would greatly disrupt the geometry of the street through the spacing along Colvin Avenue is the spacing that exists previously and will exist now. So we added more trees along Anthony Street. The city forester had looked at them. He agreed with using Zelkova along there. That's a. A tree which is used in the city significantly and we've had good luck with it, survives quite well in our climate and also has. Shown a survivability against the salt intrusion due to salt on the roadways. We've added a row of trees between us and a dog park. And a little portion that's residential at the end on that area, we've added both minor trees and shrubs. And it, those trees are. Evergreen, they're actually our miner now, they're planted miner, but they'll grow quite big and we planted. A number of deciduous shrubs in between. We also planted some trees on the islands and we have some minor growth on the islands. We think it's. A very nice. Planting plan. We also added, as street furniture, we added seven planters on Colvin Avenue. And what we'll do is we'll change those every year with annual flowers and that's good. We can do some spring flowers and then replace them. In the fall with mums or something that'll last quite quite late in the fall. Next. This is a view of the site. Very similar previous rendered view where we took off the signs that we didn't want to. Have the sign part of this approval when they. When the applicant is ready, he'll apply for sign permits appropriate to both buildings. Next. Think I have another slide or two, yeah.
I think that's all it for you, Dan. I added a couple. With respect to the waiver and criteria. If you'd like.
Yeah, the.
Maybe, I mean.
You can take it from here.
If you'd like. Okay. Just to clarify for the board, you know, as per the seventy six Second Avenue project and a couple of others that you've seen recently. Pursuant to the newly revised waiver procedure. A waiver has been requested on this project with respect to driveway access location. The code speaks to all parking being accessed from rear alleys where they exist and or side streets, if a lot is located on a corner. And all districts except MUCH, this is an MU NC district, so it does apply here. And this is of no rear alley, so of course rear alley or side street exists, effort should be made to demonstrate an attempt to gain access from neighboring properties. In this circumstance, applicant has proposed a two way drive from Colvin Avenue. And a one way egress onto Anthony Street. There's also a proposed cross access connection. Between number fifty Colvin Avenue, which does have an existing ingress egress drive into this site. So that that could potentially be used as well. I think the. The principal intent of that cross access in this case is is for shared parking usage, however. That would provide an additional egress for both that property and this property. It, this does deviate from the code in that the code would speak to Anthony Street being the. Where the access should be coming from. And I believe. Well, just to look at the standards for a waiver are the same for an area variance. They're stated on the screen here, whether an undesirable change will be created as a result, whether the benefits offered by the applicant can be achieved by another means. Whether the waiver is substantial. And whether the there will be impact on the physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district and whether the waiver is self created. And again, this speaks to. The specific issue at hand, which is placing the principal drive onto Colvin Avenue as opposed to having access solely from Anthony Street. And I just wanted to put forward some considerations. For the board with respect to the waiver request, some of which were stated by the applicant and some which came up during our month long review of the project. The proposed configuration is that it's preferred by the Division of Traffic Engineering, that'd be two way access from Colvin Avenue and one way egress onto Anthony. Ingress on Anthony Street was disfavored by the Traffic Engineering Department. And it may not receive their endorsement, the two way egress, part of that is because there is. Principally Anthony Street serves the Westland Hills Park and there's a meeting in the center of the road. And it is unlike some of the other corner lots on Colvin, which, for example. Are shared with Lincoln Avenue where there there access from that is more, although it is a side street, it is more of a principal street that serves. You know, a larger portion of property than than Anthony Street, essentially dead end leading into the park. There was also a cross access connection considered all the way through twenty eight Colvin Avenue. However, there are some challenges with existing retaining wall and grades there. Potentially could be done, however. There would be additional issues that could potentially come up with respect to cut through traffic from Lincoln on Anthony. So at this time, that's not something that's recommended either. And just to underscore that the the cross access connection is something that's generally encouraged by our by our code, so. With that said, I also just wanted to reorient the board to development plan review criteria.
A Brad?
Yes.
Yeah, before we go into that. I think I'd like to take these separately. Can we can we talk about the waiver first? I had, I just wanted to be clear. I know we've seen this a few times. Well, we haven't gotten as detailed a response from the engineering department and traffic safety department. The, am I correct in assuming that there is one? Egress from Colvin Avenue on the south end of the. Um, development, which is shown there on the far left of the site plan. And then there's a second ingress in the middle between the two buildings. Is that correct?
So yes, the. The bottom.
No egress onto. Colvin Avenue from the area between the two buildings. The only egress is from Anthony Street. Is that correct?
There is an ingress, there's a shared ingress and egress onto Colvin Avenue that is located south of the larger building that's being proposed. And there is a sole egress onto Anthony Street. To the west of the smaller building that's being proposed. So that would be bottom left and top right of the photograph on the bottom of the slide here.
Was there a reason given? Why there is both? Egress and ingress from Colvin Avenue between the two buildings. Rather than two ingresses and just the one egress on Anthony.
You know, I guess I, as far as a reason, I would defer to the applicant. On the why, I do know that this was the proposal that was put forward and reviewed by our our traffic division and. They are endorsing of the proposal as it stands.
I can respond to that, Mr. Chairman. We reviewed this extensively at Build2Go and. We thought originally we would cut out to Anthony Street with a full service driveway, but he did not want that. Center Island cut, as a matter of fact, one of the elements we had to put on there is to keep people from shortcutting across that. We added three. Three shrubs across there to prevent people from driving through unless they want to drive through the shrubs. But again. The reason that we kept the driveway at the at the south side of the property, a two way ingress egress. Is it will allow people leaving the site to take a choice about which way they want to go. Somebody who's making a right hand turn out of the site and wants to go. Towards. Colvin and Washington Avenue might take the driveway to the south of the three story building. Somebody that was going. Left out the site and going towards Central Avenue might prefer to come out Anthony Street, although they could come down. And make a left hand turn there, but we we thought to split the. The. The exiting traffic in the two makes the most. Most desirous element there. You realize. Are a little bit opposed. Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I might have misunderstood then. So the the double. Ingress egress is from the very south driveway, not from the one between the two buildings.
Yeah, it's, no, it's the one, no, the one between, there is no exit or entrance between the two buildings, between the one star and a three story building, there's nothing.
Ah. So there's nothing, there's no ingress or egress between the two buildings. It's just the one on the very south side.
Yeah, that's, that's a plaza. We have it separated by retaining wall and it's a seating seating area for a restaurant and a little courtyard area.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I've reviewed the plans, but that's just totally missed. I missed all of that. Sorry.
Thank you.
Are there other questions for the board regarding the traffic pattern? Okay, hearing none. Brad, you want to continue then on the development plan review, please?
Yes. So I. I think the board is pretty familiar with the. Criteria for development plan review approval. I just want to put them on the screen for anyone that else that's viewing and may want to get. Take a look at those and I did just, you know, with respect to some of these. In your memos acted, did speak to individual reasoning for how it did or did not meet the criteria. I just sort of summarized those. The best I could to hit the high points. The 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 plans as they stand have been reviewed and endorsed by the. Department of Fire and Emergency Service, Water and Water Supply, Division of Traffic Engineering. And the Division of Engineering. In response to Ray, which we, which Dan Hirschberg touched on in response to concerns raised at prior meetings of this board. Additional environmental testing was completed by the applicants. And there were no elements or compounds found that warranted any additional subsurface or restrictions on the site. Proposal is consistent with a number of comprehensive plan objectives. Three of them are listed here. Enhancing improving access to public to institutional open spaces. Bacon, then a property reuse and remediate a brown, a brown field site in particular. There are a number of other criteria that it meets, but for the sake of time, they're not all listed here. There are no other known approvals, which the project must comply. There aren't any prior approvals or development rules for the site that would restrict it in any way that we're aware of. And with respect to the USDO complies with all the provisions except those stated here, which we've identified. And are proposing that. Conditions of approval would address three of those with respect to the roof mounted mechanical equipment screening, which is proposed to be screened. Just not particularly in the way that that it stated within the code, they're proposing a corrugated metal screen as opposed to using the built up building parapet wall. However, that's only if it's visible from the street, which we believe it's setback enough where it won't be visible from the street. But we are adding that as a condition of approval so that we can verify that. You know, as as we move forward towards permit issuance. Also, with respect to ground mounted electrical equipment, there's likely to be a transformer, however, national grid typically will not enter into negotiations for those sort of provisions with the applicants until they have a site plan approval. Sort of a chicken and the egg sort of scenario here. So we are proposing that be a condition that that any of those ground mounted. Locations be cleared with our department as well as screen pursuant to the code. When they do present themselves. As well as the installation of pedestrian scale lighting, that that be installed to the specifications of our Department of General Services. You know, this is a provision in our code that we do need the consent of the department that inevitably is going to. Maintain these lighting, these lights, and in some cases they would prefer to do that as an entire streetscape as opposed to on the individual project site basis. So we wanted to make sure we had their endorsement before we. Formalized any plan with respect to that. And then you're aware of the driveway access location waiver request that has been submitted. formalized any plan with respect to that. And then you're aware of the driveway access location waiver request that has been submitted. And then just, we wanted to speak to if the board is seeking to prove this tonight, we had some recommended conditions of approval. Before we take public comment, we just wanted to put those on the screen for your for your consideration relating to the implementation of the Affordable Housing Compliance Plan, that is a requirement of our affordable housing set aside guidelines, that be a condition of approval. That the cross-access easement for the properties with forty and fifty be recorded as an easement in the deed for all three properties and filed with the Office of Albany County Clerk. The condition that was discussed related to the roof and ground-mounted mechanical equipment and the condition relating to the lighting installations within the public right-of-way. Believe that was the last slide that I had, so I will put us back on the site plan drawing and turn it back over to you, Al.
Okay, um, just a quick question. You mentioned the recommended conditions for approval, but prior to that, you also recommended some other conditions that those other conditions, I think there was four of them that you had enumerated. Are we also specifically voting on those item by item or are we? Is that part of the overall approval of the development plan itself?
Are you speaking to the memorandum now?
Well, you, yeah, what you put up on the screen, not only
Right. So these would, these would be in place of those. I apologize for not clarifying. You know, I I had taken a look at the the memorandum that Zach had put together and I made a few changes to the language. If there's anything that I that I left out, but you know, I feel that these were the the four that we should be considering.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Is there anybody who would like to speak?
I believe so. Let me. I believe Councilman O'Brien had signed up to speak and there are a couple of others on the call. I would ask if they could raise their hands if they wanted to speak. Otherwise, I will call councilman.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, I want to note that the president of the Upper Washington Avenue Neighborhood Association today submitted a letter to you with some very serious concerns. I agree with what he said in that, and I also want to raise some additional ones. First off, I want to note that I think Al's comments about the ingress egress are very real. And if you look at this rendering, which is on the screen now, it takes the ingress egress is a very narrow space between sixty Calvin and fifty Calvin, which are both owned by the same developer. They have rendered fifty Calvin Avenue to be invisible, thereby making you think that there is a lot of visibility for ingress and egress out of that driveway, two-way driveway that's going to be between sixty and fifty. In fact, there's a three-story building there owned by the same developer. Now, I went through your whole packet trying to find an approval from the traffic department and I could find nothing in writing. I know I find it amazing that they are going to allow left-hand ingress and egress out of that driveway, which goes between two three-story canyon-like buildings and only has visibility when you're ten feet from the curb. I find it amazing that they're going to approve left-hand ingress and egress. And I know that when the traffic department said the same thing for another proposal on the other end of Calvin Avenue, you summarily rejected it. You didn't find it credible that it was safe, and that is one of the criterion that you must find before you approve this. Now, you state that there's a waiver and that that can be met with the egress onto Anthony Street. There's a serious issue with regard to Anthony Street, and it was raised in conversations that I've had with the attorney for the council, J.R. Picardo. Namely, that it is very likely that Anthony Street, since it was constructed with the same pot of money that created Westland Hills Park, and it was constructed as the ingress and egress to Westland Hills Park. And when Armory Garage sought a development and put a gate in their fence onto Anthony Street, it was told that they could not use it except for emergency use. That should have been a red flag that there is at least an implied dedication of all of Anthony Street for park purpose. Now, I've asked our council to research that. I've raised this issue before, but I've never gotten a definitive answer, and it would require going back into the nineteen sixties to look at the documents which created Westland Hills Park. But we do know that Anthony Street was created simultaneous to the creation of Westland Hills Park. It was very likely it was done in the same ordinances, resolutions, budget lines, whatever of the council and of the city, done to execute the creation and ingress and egress to Westland Hills Park. So I think there's a very serious issue that this is a usurpation of sparks, park space, which you have no authority to grant a waiver for. That has to be done by a homeland rule measure from the common council to the state legislature. That is a very real possibility that I think the red flag went up with the Armory Garage across the street on Anthony Street, but I don't believe it's ever been researched by your planning board or by the city administration. You, but there's also another waiver, which are silent, and that's the green space waiver. Now, Mr. Hersberg came up and said that a green roof will meet the needs of a green space waiver. That's not what the code says. USDL three seventy-five dash four F says, "Any development or redevelopment that triggers the requirements of this section shall ensure that landscaping, buffering achieves at least an equivalent of thirty percent lot coverage by vegetated material." A roof, a green roof is none of those things. This is a waiver. And as you know, an ordinance was passed, approved by the planning board, passed by the council, making waivers a lot more difficult to be gotten, and they can't be silent waivers. They have to be publicly discussed, publicly justified, and a green roof does not meet the requirements of the USDO, which is also one of the overall five requirements that Brad put up on his slide to you. Now, the other thing would be the project is simply too big. We are not opposed to apartments, but this project is too big, creating the necessity for waivers that may not even be lawful to be granted, creating the necessity for traffic to make dangerous left-hand turns in and out of that canyon. And I think it speaks volumes that in the depiction that they give you, they make their building at fifty Calvin Avenue invisible. I think that's deceitful. I think it's misleading, and I think you should challenge them on that. And I think Al was on to that, when he says, isn't your driveway between two buildings? It most certainly is, and I think you have to seriously consider that and not gloss over it because it is a traffic hazard safety, which is one of the principles which has to be met before you grant such a such a project approval. So I don't think it's to the benefit of the neighborhood. A smaller project is. But apparently, we've raised that issue many times with the applicants when they came to our Neighborhood Association meetings, and they rebuffed us. Never got a concept.
Councilman, you're at just over six minutes, if you wouldn't mind wrapping up comments.
Well, there is a lot to be said, and I would also make this request. J.R. Picardo was going to try to be in your queue for commenting. He, I don't know if he signed up to speak. I don't know if he's in the queue, but in my conversation with I had with him today, he, if he's in your queue, he told me that he would like to speak. And he can, he's the one who raised all these issues, which the New York, that the handbook by the New York State Department of Parks, for municipalities on park use, has specific sections in it that must be considered about not just explicit dedication, but implied dedication. And I think there's creation of this, which may show that there was such a dedication and it's never even been considered. And J.R. said
Okay, um, the applicant has five minutes to rebut any items.
Don't see. I, just to clarify, I don't see J.R. Picardo on the list of attendees, so fortunately.
Mr. Hersberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When we were working for Brighter Choice back in two thousand and six, they applied to build a school on the site, and a question was raised then. I wrote a letter to the Secretary of the Interior, the United States Department of the Interior. He never responded to me, but he did have a a deputy secretary or an assistant secretary get back to me. And I I related to her that on six thirty nineteen seventy-three, the Department of Interior approved a grant in the amount of fifty percent of the cost of what was called the first phase of Westland Hills Park. We were the engineer for that at the time. At the time, Clinton Street existed, or Clinton Avenue existed to a point beyond where the dog park start. It covered the entire area of sixty Colvin Avenue and went about fifty feet further. And that was already a roadway, a public right-of-way. That was renamed to Anthony Street off after a founder of Armory Garage. So that having been said, Brighter Choice pulled their application, not because of the access situation, they pulled their application because of the debris they found in it and the the height of the building they want to build and everything else, they found too much foundation problems with it. So the, I, when the Assistant Secretary got back to me, she said that if in fact the intention was to have a restricted area, they would have filed a deed restriction on the property when they, by the time they gave the financing, or they would have had a document that explicitly reserved the right of that Clinton Avenue right-of-way for for access to Western Hills Park. Such a document was never filed. I don't think anybody had a copy of it. Doug Melnick, when he was the planning director, said they looked high and low. They found nothing in the city records that showed anything like that. We made a search of the Albany County Clerk's office. There is no document speaking to that sort of restriction. So we think the assumption that because Anthony Street was built as part of the access into Western Hills Park does not make it part of the park. We put, we put the sign out on Colvin Avenue to direct people to the park, but the fact that the signs out there does not mean that's the start of the parkland. The start of the parkland is back where the dog park is, and that only became part of the Western Hills Park when the city acquired that, which was after Western Hills Park was constructed.
You only have a little bit of time, so I would suggest that you move on to other ones. I I do have a comment also from the planning director, Brad Glass, which he can also explain about his research, but move on to the, some of the other items.
Okay, the the major other item had to do with coming through a canyon between number fifty and number sixty. The same sort of situation exists between forty and fifty. Cars pull up, they're, they, if they, when they pull up, they stop at the sidewalk, when the sidewalk, protection on back to sidewalk, they pull up, their visibility is fine in both directions. The normal routine is you stay, you take the front of the bumper area, allow three feet from the edge and seven and a half feet more to get where the driver normally is. And if that's clear, the sidewalk is about eight, to the face of the building is about eighteen feet. So we do not think there's any visibility problem anymore that exists on other locations. We think that there's no reason not to allow left-hand turns out.
Okay. Brad, could you please comment on the Anthony Street thing? Because I know you did some research and very specifically found so a documentation that talks of the tax maps that talk about a three hundred and fifty-foot area of, as a public right-of-way.
Well, just just speaking to the conditions of the tax max, the tax ma, tax maps reflect the city street that extends approximately three hundred and fifty feet off of Colvin Avenue, at which point, you know, visibly, there's no change in the roadway. However, it becomes at that point a part of the tax parcel that encompasses the larger park. So you know, absent any any further research, you know, my sort of educated guess would be that three hundred and fifty-foot delineation would be where it would be encumbered by any sort of park dedication. But you know, again, this is something that occurred in nineteen nineteen seventy-four, so it's it's not ready at hand and anything beyond that.
Well, you said specifically, though, that the, that the, that the first three hundred and fifty feet is a public right-of-way and that the proposed egress is located a hundred and ninety-five feet up. So clearly, the egress is on a public uh, street, onto a public street.
Correct. You know, I I think the councilman is is asserting that that public street is encumbered by the larger park dedication. You know, whether or not that's the case, again, that's something that dates back quite a while. I did, subsequent to having the conversation with the councilman just a couple of days ago, I did reach out to Bill Trudeau. Again, I had not spoken with him directly. He had been coordinating with Zach on the project. Just to clarify that I was aware of his his full opinion. He is, this is the layout that that he is supportive of. And we did raise the hypothetical scenario of, you know, if Anthony Street was somehow encumbered, where it couldn't allow an egress, would that affect his overall review and endorsement of the project? And the answer that he gave me was no, that he would be comfortable solely with the two-way egress, ingress, egress onto Colvin Avenue. However, the egress on Anthony, I think, does improve the traffic situation or have the potential to do so. That's really the extent to which I can comment. I mean, the the project, the size and scale really is not of a size that typically requires a traffic study. So this is a review that's typically done by by our Division of Traffic Engineering, and like I said, they're endorsing of the plan as it stands today.
Um, if I could just comment. If I could just comment as well. I mean, just looking at the the map, Anthony Street is a mapped named street. From all evidence that is available to me, at least it seems that it's been laid out as a public right-of-way. At least, as Brad was saying, for that three hundred and fifty feet before it becomes part of the Western Hills parcel. I think that there might be a certain amount of confusion in the legal terminology because both streets and parks are said to be encumbered with public trust. However, these are different public trusts. And generally speaking, streets are treated like streets and parks are treated like parks. So, you know, just because there's a public trust on both of these doesn't mean that the street can only be used for park purposes. I would be, I would be surprised if there, if if there is that sort of document. I mean, if it does exist, by all means, if you know, if if somebody would provide it to us. But that would be a strange encumbrance, as far as I'm aware. And the public trust that's impressed on a street is not just so that, you know, it it wouldn't be solely for park purposes. It would be for the use of the right-of-way for the traveling public. So, you know, just having a curb cut and having access to an adjacent property wouldn't be something that would interfere with the, you know, with the public's travel on that street.
Thank you. Are there other questions from the board? Brad, can you would, once again, address the ingress egress? I I'm, I know that Bill Trudeau had indicated that the the plan was acceptable. I'm just wondering, what is, and I think you mentioned this before hypothetically, but I wanted I'm just wondering, what is, and I think you mentioned this before hypothetically, but I wanted to be clear. What is the problem of just allowing ingress at the south end and egress onto Anthony?
I mean, I, I think if that's what the board, you know, would find to be more appropriate, that's certainly something that could be considered. I, I don't know that that has been fully studied. I don't have the details on. You know, I did previous, and I, I, I may have stated that I relied. I did have a previous conversation with Bill specifically about left-hand turns out onto Calvin Avenue, because that was raised in a prior meeting that I had with the councilman and a couple of the neighborhood stakeholders with respect to, would that create a dangerous situation? And that, that, you know, he, he didn't believe that it would. So, again, I think the, the benefit of having more egress rather than less, there, there is a benefit to that, provided that it doesn't create conflict, which, which here, I don't believe that it does.
Any board members have any comments on, on that specific issue?
I do agree with Dan, and if, in fact, the building is sixteen or eighteen feet setback from the, from the curb, that's nearly, for a lot of cars, that's the entire length of, of the car. So a motorist pulling up there to look either direction would have clear, clear view in both directions.
Yeah, that's, that's been my, my thought, too, is that the, the building, and you could see it in the site plan, is far enough back that you have a good sightline all the way down beyond the second building. I was just wondering if, if cars may be tied up a little bit. Because when the light is red at Lincoln, the cars may back up to that point. Although, in my experience, I haven't seen that. The only time I've, and I go on that street almost every day, and I, I'm at almost all different times of the day, and the farthest I've been backed up has been the gray, the blue and gray building, about halfway down the blue and gray building next door, which is number fifty. But I think that the sightline is okay, from what I could see from the plan.
Yes, I agree.
So when it, when it's appropriate, Al, that I, I'm, I'm being told that their individual, the applicants would like to speak again, and I, for some reason, they're showing up as someone else on our list here. So I may not have recognized them during the public comment. Is, or I don't know if they're the public per se, but Al, did you want to entertain any comments from, I believe, Joe Greenwich and Tony DeThomas's?
I don't think so, because we gave them an opportunity to speak. And there's nobody else who, who wishes to speak from the public either, so I think we should move on. I'd like you, though, Brad, if you could, to address the issue of green space. Again, I know that there's some controversy about that, but as far as I understand, is that the thirty percent rule includes any green space and that, that is undeveloped area within the plan itself.
Well, it's, it's, the provision that was referred to is a somewhat incoherent or poorly written section that is in conflict with a number of other sections within the USDA. The USDA sets by district a lot coverage allowance. You know, and it's based upon impervious coverage. For the MUNC district, that number is ninety percent. There is a separate provision for apartment units to provide ten percent equivalent of the site area as active-passive recreation, that in some cases indoor space, in some cases outdoor space. The provision, you know, I believe it speaks to, you know, thirty percent of the open space area that is on the site, you know, has to be landscaped. It can't just be rocks or stones or otherwise unimproved area. There's also another interpretation that speaks to lot coverage as it's defined. And again, that doesn't refer to impervious lot coverage like the rest of the sections of our code, or specifically lot coverage, which is defined as the total area of the site covered by buildings. So if you were to take a literal reading of that section, you would take, you know, thirty percent of the area covered by the buildings and, and provide that those were landscaped. In practicality, most sites within the city could not meet a thirty percent, and that is not reflective of the existing built conditions in many areas and neighborhoods in the city. You know, I, I understand that there's disagreements about what the intent is, but, you know, our belief is that, you know, that, that isn't, that isn't a, an explicit requirement of the code. And, you know, I did point out that that had been raised in this case, and as I typically do with applicants, as I stated to Councilman O'Brien as well, where that issue is raised, I always suggest that the applicants strive to meet that requirement just so there isn't any confusion or legal challenges with respect to that particular provision. And in this case, I believe that they have in, in the code. It's pretty explicit in our impervious lot coverage criteria that a green roof is included within that calculation. So my belief is that the green roof added to the twenty or three, some odd percent that exists for open green space site would equal the equivalent of thirty percent. I did find it interesting that it came out to exactly thirty percent. But, you know, that said, if it's, if it's not, it's very close. And again, my belief that that's not an explicit requirement as, as it's been stated.
Okay, board members, questions? Concerns? Hearing done, we'll move on. We have two recommended actions regarding the, the project. The first one is a recommended action to approve the waiver for the driveway onto Calvin Avenue. Do I have a motion?
Don't move, Martin.
Moved by Martin?
Yes.
And I will second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oh, Al, I just thought of, just one more comment on that, which is that we should realize that this development will have, will, will create a lot less traffic than the, than the Stewarts down, down on the corner, you know, being roughly sixty-five units residential with a small amount of additional mixed-use space is a lot less than a major gas station.
But that obviously will be in the record. Okay, I, I heard three ayes. Chris Ellis, are you still with us?
Yes, and I, I said aye. I don't know why. I actually second the motion.
Well, okay, thank, thank you. I did not know that. So it was moved and seconded and approved. The second item is a recommended action, which is to approve the the development plan with these conditions, and I will read them into the record. The first condition is prior to the approval of the building permits, the applicant must submit a set of site plans that identifies the proposed affordable units that were referenced in the November twenty-seventh Affordable Housing Compliance Plan application. The second condition is prior to the approval of a certificate of occupancy for buildings, one and two, the applicant must implement an Affordable Housing Compliance Plan. The third condition is prior to the approval of building permits, the applicant must submit an electronic copy of the deed that's been filed with the Albany County government that includes the proposed ingress and egress easement that is between fifty and sixty Calvin Avenue. And the fourth condition is also prior to the approval of a certificate of occupancy. If the proposed rooftop corrugated metal screening on building one is visible from the public right-of-way, the applicant will need to submit a revised design to the Department of Planning and receive approval for the type of screening that meets the standards of section three seventy-five dash four, parentheses F, parentheses nine, parentheses B, of the Unified Sustainable Development Ordinance. So with those conditions, the recommendation is to approve the development plan. I will make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, further questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, it passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We have one more item on the agenda, and this is regarding Somerset Associates LP at nine hundred Central Avenue LLC, debt and post-funding, and Central Calvin Realty versus the Common Council. The, the proposal is to go into executive session to discuss the current litigation concerning this lawsuit. And to do that, we need a, a motion to approve going into executive session. I will make the motion. Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved to second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Okay, let the record reflect that we will go into executive session at the time of seven sixteen.
Al, I, I am going to go ahead and remove the remaining three attendees because as much as I tried to figure out how to do a breakup session on this, I wasn't able to figure it out. So apologies to the three of you that I'm gonna remove from the meeting, but that's the only way I know how to do it.
If I could just mention also, this is purely an update. There's going to be no action or anything like that even considered.
An update, yes, thank you.
Just an update.
Okay, I think, I think it's just the panelists has provided the, the other Chris Ellis is off now.
I was learning about that.
Who is that?
I, I don't. Joe Greenwich.